Give Susan one more minute.
I call this meeting to order on Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. Want to welcome everybody. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Brian Downing of the Oakdale Church of God at 1631 Cooper Lake Road. Brian, if you'll come down and give our invocation also, lead us in the place of the flag and just be mindful of the snowstorm that's coming in. So, everyone please rise.
Father, we thank you so much for this day. We give you thanks for men and women that you've placed in leadership in and around our community. And we thank you for the great community that we live in. We pray and ask, Lord, that you would continue to guide us and direct this community for the greatness of generations to come. And we ask this in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Brian, for coming and giving the invocation. For those folks that are looking for a new church or just want to come visit, I'm sure the folks at Oakdale Church of God at 1631 Cooper Lake Road, you can put that in your, you can Google that, it'll get you right there, hands-free. So, thank you very much, Brian. Item two, it's agenda changes. The only thing that's been any change is that one of the issues on the agenda will be tabled. That is item 4B, 2017-362. Once we get to that, it'll be tabled to the 5th of February, 2018. That is the only thing. Merrill report. Scott, you want me to introduce our two exchange students, or did we do that last time? Yeah, why don't you just let everybody know who they are? Yeah.
Well, I can't stand and use the mic there. There we go. These are two of our interns are from Lyon in France. They'll be here with us about two months now, incredibly talented, graphic design, marketing skills. So, they're assisting the team and teaching us quite a bit during the process. So, thank you for your contributions, ladies.
They have very selective English, but they speak several different languages and we're delighted to have them here. Our father's in the, is in the business community and you never know what happens to us. We may be end up doing some business with the folks over in Lyon, France. So, thank y'all. Okay, item four is land issues, zonings and annexations. Out of May 2017, that's 252, public hearings, only request, Z17-013, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of four single-family residences at a density of 3.39 units per acre, 1.1 acre acres land lot 593 at 1505 and 1515 Spring Street Neighborhood Commercial LLC. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, everyone. Neighborhood Commercial Holdings LLC is seeking rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of four new single-family homes at a density of 3.39 units per acre. This item was tabled from the September 11th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting to the October 9th, 2017 meeting due to Tropical Storm Irma. The zoning item was heard at the October 9th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting and it was recommended for denial by a vote of five to one. Community Development has recommended approval of the proposed rezoning for 1505 and 1515 Spring Street with conditions. Ken Sudrith, our Community Development Director, is here to provide you with some additional information.
Is the applicant here? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? For anyone that wants to speak, I want to get everybody sworn in all at one time. Even if you end up, after the testimony, you decide you don't want to speak, I still want to get you sworn in. So, everyone that wants to speak, please step forward and be sworn in. Mr. Cochran? Okay, you folks will have a seat. This is in Ms. Marilyn Blackburn's district. I'm sure she's going to want Ken Sudrith or Rusty or Joey to give the background. Oh, and just for the record, Ms. Andrea Bluestein is not here tonight. She has some, some personal issues, so we wish her well.
Okay. Thank y'all. This is a zoning change. There is a recommendation from staff for approval of this, but you also have a recommendation from the Planning Commission for denial of this. And that denial from the Planning Commission was a five-one vote. What's on the screen now is the zoning map with the subject property highlighted. What they're proposing are four new single-family residents. So, the change is from R15 to an RAD conditional. The future development map, also known as our land use map. The existing classification is moderate density. The proposed would be moderate density. So, there is no change there. And as you can see in the adjoining contiguous properties, it's all moderate density as well. This is the proposed site plan for the four lots. Lot one, as I'm sure the applicant will describe, will actually be oriented towards Spring Street with the other three lots oriented to the new drive, to the new alleyway. There are minimum setbacks, so there are some adjustments that they're asking for as well, front of 20, side of five feet and rear of 30. This shows the stormwater detention facility being in the back of the property. The proposed open space with their amenity off of a drive that would act also as a turnaround. And there's the turnaround as I had referenced. They're also going to do a five-foot right-of-way dedication back to the city on their side of Spring Street with a five-foot sidewalk. There has been some discussion about the use of this technique and whether we've done it before in the city as well as in Williams Park. You can see that there's at least 12 examples that we've done throughout the city where we've either used private streets or alleyways, lots without actual public frontage. It's been done in the past. And the list is there. A little closer view in Williams Park. We've done it for the, for Whittfield Park, for Walker Street Manor. You can see the subject parcel there with the star. We've done it across the street. That development's called Spring, excuse me, Spring Street Village as well. So, it has been done numerous times throughout the city. This is the proposed street view from the private road. And just close-ups of those home elevations. This is the existing subject property and the adjacent properties. As we've already said, staff's recommendation was for approval. Again, planning commission's recommendation was for denial. But if you decide to approve this request with these conditions, plus the condition of, you know, attaching it, binding it to the site plan that's been submitted, which would pick up all of those other issues associated with the driveway. Anyway, the standard conditions still apply. We've outlined those here with the, regarding the composition of homes and the protective covenants, all the open space requirements, traffic improvements, stuff that we bring to you each and every month on a rezoning request. That is a standard condition within the zoning ordinance. Special conditions, again, which deal directly with this proposed site plan. Already talked about the minimum setbacks. The minimum lot size would be no less than 9,080 square feet with the minimum home size no less than 1,800. I realize that they are proposing bigger floor area size, but the minimum floor area of the ordinance has to be at least 1,800. That's why it is listed that way. We've had enough discussion through the years about driveways having at least 22 feet in length. Final plot will include that five-foot right-of-way dedication. There shall be a 10-foot landscape buffer along the northern property line. We've talked about the five-foot sidewalk that would also include a two-foot grass buffer strip. On that, we've talked about the private street. The applicant shall work with the city engineer regarding any site distance issues they may have. The water and sewer improvements are the responsibility of the developer. Fire access has to be coordinated through the fire marshal through our plan review process. But those issues, just so that you know, have also been discussed internally with our committee on that. So, the site plan that, that runs with this approval recommendation from a preliminary standpoint already meets the needs of those people. The reason we put these in again is something may come up in the field that needs additional review and we're just making sure that everybody is aware of that. There shall be a 50-foot public access and utility easement for the water and sewer. Because this is a private street and we will not have right-of-way, we go to a 50-foot public access easement issue. We've talked about the stormwater facilities. That has, you know, 28 talks about limits of disturbance, meaning the tree ordinance. We've already talked about the private streets that the HOA will be responsible for that. The home adjacent to Spring Street shall have its front on Spring Street. That's been mentioned as well. The private street shall not be gated. And that approval, again, going back to the specific site plan regarding, you know, the width of the street and other site plan issues, we are binding that, them to that site plan. That's what items 32, the elevations you've seen in 33 pick up. And then 34 is additional stipulation that the applicant has agreed to, which is also attached. That, I'll leave you with the proposed site plan that runs with this recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Sudrith?
Thank you.
It's the applicant, if you'll step forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name's Garvis Sams. I'm with the firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff and Bally and represent, of course, the applicant here, Neighborhood Commercial LLC concerning this application for rezoning. And I have with me that was seated on the same row as I am back there, Mr. Thayer Hannoey and Jennifer Steele, principals of Neighborhood Commercial. So, to the extent I can't respond appropriately or sufficiently to any questions you have, then, then we've got them from a technical perspective. And, and they're here today to be able to respond to those questions. Mr. Sudrith always does an excellent job of making a presentation and, and giving you the facts of the situation from staff's perspective and also providing you with the underlying reasons for their, meaning staff's, recommendation for approval of the application, which is objective, is certainly not a subjective determination. And it's consistent with the approach that the staff has taken, not only in Ward Three, but citywide. And Mr. Sudrith just gave you some excellent examples, I think 12 different examples within the sub-area where the same type of developmental scenario has, has taken place and been approved. The property, just to be clear, is 1.1 acres, 1.18 acres, which is, you know, right at two units or two acres, located, as you can see, on the north side of Spring Street. It, the request is from R15 to RAD conditional for the purposes of the development of, and construction and development of four custom quality-built, single-family detached homes ranging in price points from $650,000 to $720,000. Of course, it could go higher than that depending on the upgrades required by each individual homeowner. And these are not spec homes. These are being built specifically for people that want to be in the city of Smyrna and within Ward Three. Also, to be clear, it might be helpful if I could, from time to time during my presentation, refer you to certain pages of the, of the handout that you, that you've got. The pages are not numbered, so you're going to have to count to seven. But I know you can do it, there's seven of you. I've seen you do it before. But, but just so you know what's, what's contiguous to the property and what it's bounded by, if you look at the fifth page of that, of that handout, which is stolen from the staff analysis and recommendations, but it's an excellent demonstrative exhibit to, to give you an idea. If you look on the north, that property to the north is zone RAD conditional for a three-home subdivision, which was approved in 2015. It is RAD conditional. That was the application request and that is what it is zoned. On the east, there is a four-lot subdivision oriented towards Spring Street, which was rezoned in 2013. I handled that rezoning also to the RAD conditional zoning classification. So, that was in 2013. If you look across Spring Road on page five of the exhibit, you can also see that there's a multiplicity of RAD conditional zonings and a one-single-family house that is standalone house. And then looking on the west of the property, you can see that all that property is R15. It is linearly oriented along that intersection there at Spring Street and Walker Court. So, three sides of this property has contiguous RAD conditional zoning. The property, as, as you can see on page six of the handout that you, you have, which shows your future land use map or comprehensive map. This is moderate density, not medium density, but moderate density residential, which allows residences or residential densities up to 4.5 units per acre. We are at a density of 3.39 units per acre, which is more than a unit per acre below the maximum that would be allowed and significantly less, significantly less in density than all but one of the, the eight different developments that your staff analyzed in terms of RAD conditional developments, which staff specifically uses as a part of its equation, a part of its analysis. Additionally, of those other subdivisions, those eight subdivisions analyzed by staff, this property has, except for one of those, the largest lot sizes, the widest of all of the lots that have been analyzed, the largest houses. And Mr. Sudrith mentioned 1,800 square feet. That's what your ordinance requires. But our price points will be commensurate with the house sizes. The house sizes will be 3,200 square feet as a minimum, up to 4,500 square feet and, and greater. With the larger lot sizes, we have ample opportunity to be able to do that without maxing out the lot or increasing impervious surface that goes beyond your ordinance requirements. Of all those eight subdivisions that staff analyzes, this is also the one that has the, the highest price points as well. It's become evident to me during the, the penance of this application, and it was filed in June, on June 9th of last year, that there's an inordinate amount of confusion regarding a rezoning attempt in 2015. I didn't handle it. It wasn't a client of mine, not sure who the developer was, but a part of this property was a part of a rezoning in 2015. And for some reason, people are thinking this is the analogous property, the analogous developer, and that all the facts and circumstances are identical. This couldn't be further from the truth. And the differences in this rezoning and that abortive attempt in 2015 are vast and disparate or disparate. For instance, the 2015 rezoning sought to rezone a size of a tract that's twice as large as this, at 2.36 acres. The 2015 rezoning attempt was a request for six homes as opposed to the four homes you see that Mr. Hannoey is proposing. The 2015 application for rezoning never reached this level. It was withdrawn prior to reaching the, the city mayor and council. The density then was 3.8 units per acre. The density tonight is 3.3. Architecturally and price point-wise vastly different than the 2015 rezoning. And I ask you to look at the first four pages of the handout, not including the cover page. And you can see, of course, first of all, the conceptual site plan that we have. But the next three pages shows a linear version of the way the, the houses are situated with ample room between them, around them, in front of them and in back of them. And you can also get an idea, particularly with respect to Lot One. If you look at Lot One and, and you've got two exhibits after the linear exhibit that shows the house is going to be situated on Lot One, you can see it from both angles, both from Spring Street and both from the interior street as well. And what you, what you've got is four-sided architecture. It is clearly oriented towards Spring Street, which is one of the desires of the, of the people in the area loosely known as Williams, as Williams Park. The price points, again, in 2015 were much different. They were projected at $400,000. So, these homes between 650 and 720 and greater are at least a quarter of a million dollars per home, higher in price point than those proposed in 2015. In fact, from $250,000 to $320,000 greater. So, from a quarter of a million to almost a half a million dollars more, no, excuse me, a third of a million dollars more. That's significant. You didn't get the accolades that you've received by the state of Georgia and by the Council for Quality Growth and by other entities which make recommendations and analyze residential development for approving shoddy or the type of development that other jurisdictions may unfortunately be saddled with. You have quite the opposite reputation. The rezoning attempt in 2015 was obviously a density grab. And let me tell you why I say that. That application sought to use the open space calculations from the subdivision that's to the east and contiguous to this piece. That application was not only a density grab, it was an open space grab and was recognized as such, I'm quite sure, once the applicant, whoever he or she was, went further down the road prior to withdrawing the application. The proposal before you this evening is standalone. We're not asking for anyone's open space or the utilization of it. We're not asking for any shared detention facilities. It stands on its own merit and it's way ahead of the curve aesthetically and architecturally with four-sided architecture on each and every home, which, for your information, are not front-loaded. They're either rear or side-loaded and are not just two-car garages, but two and three-car garages as well. So, if you look at pages four and five of the handout, that shows Lot One. So, you can see the orientation to Spring Street and then the, the double orientation toward the interior road. And of course, nothing, again, is front-loaded. There's no garages facing any of the subject properties frontage on right-of-way. With the application being submitted six months ago, you, you must wonder, well, what's taken so long? Well, it's been an unusual set of political circumstances. For one, we, we met with the former ward member in, actually, January. It's been a year since we met with the former council, excuse me, ward member. And since that time, or right after that time we met, we thought appropriately so, with the city staff to, to see what their thoughts and considerations were. And we've done our best to establish a dialogue with, with area residents, but, but I'm, I'm getting the spin that this is just a reiteration of the 2015 rezoning, which, of course, as I've just stated, couldn't be further from the truth. And I think we've debunked, we've debunked that. And if you, when you did listen to Mr. Sudrith make his presentation, then, then you're aware of the fact that, notwithstanding arguments that have been advanced, that this is not appropriate to have a development on a private street, citations of authority and, and legal sites and case law have been submitted. I'm not here to litigate the case, ladies and gentlemen. You don't want to hear me get into, into lawyer talk and arguments. But, but I will tell you that, that we have also submitted citations of authority as, as we were requested to do to rebut, debunk and eviscerate the, the contentions that were put forth in terms of constitutional perspectives and in terms of the utilization of a component that you've used time and again in these type of developments. The 2015 application was, was, as I mentioned, withdrawn before it reached you. The reason for that is the product was inferior, the density was too high, the price points too low for the ilk of residential development you're seeing in, in Ward Three. So, based on our conversations with the former ward council member and our conversations with staff and preliminary conversations with area and business owners, our focus has been on the quality of this development after getting through the technical aspects of, of density and, and price points, setbacks and those type things. Simply put, you have a city attorney. We'll defer to the city attorney with respect to any legal issues that may, may arise with respect to conditional zoning in general and then the, the arguments that have been advanced by those in opposition. You know, it's a long time. I'm not going to say how long, I mean, most of it, guess or no. But we all come into these things with our eyes open. I mean, you really have to. You can't go into a rezoning application or an entitlement process unless you're fully aware of the ramifications of what aware of the ramifications of what could or might not happen. But also, from the perspective and understanding that with this particular rezoning, sometimes less is more. And that's true in terms of density and the number of houses here, but sometimes more is better. And that's in terms of what you're talking about here with square footage is ranging from 3,200 to 4,500 square feet and greater in price points, as I've mentioned and I'll mention again, because it's key, even though you can't stipulate that or impose that upon us, you can tell by the square footage and the appointments that you've got with the four-sided architecture, that's what drives the price points. So, based upon our meetings with the former ward council member and our conversations with the city's staff, my client purchased this property on February 11th, 2017. The last two pages of the handout you have showed where title was conveyed, a closing occurred. So, that purchase was not contingent upon a rezoning, but that decision was based upon the fact and the law. The use of governing authority, or any governing authority, does not have the constitutional latitude to ignore its future land use plan, doesn't have the latitude to ignore its comprehensive land use plan, nor recommendations made by professional, and I emphasize professional, staff, which has been consistent on each and every zoning that Mr. Suduth articulated in each and every rezoning that's contained in your staff analysis. So, based upon those meetings, the property was purchased, and there are constitutional safeguards that protect us, but the things that cannot be looked at are the red herrings that have been thrown out during the penance of this application regarding the non-viability of conditional zoning. Again, my client, and defer to your city attorney in that regard. This is not your problem, but the clock is ticking for Mr. Hanaway. His profitability or the lack thereof, that's not your problem. It's really not even for consideration. I bring it up because he's here and he is a property owner and he seeks to rezone. And what's been described, I think, most articulately and eloquently is the best residential community in the city, excuse me, in the state of Georgia. So, you can't base your decision on red herrings and on fictive legal arguments. For those reasons, this property cannot, does not compare favorably with other assembly zone and situated properties with equivalent utility under its R-15 classification, and that is the key. Not where we can make more money or not, but can it compare favorably as R-15? And the resounding answer to that is no. So, we do respectfully request that you follow your future land use map, that you follow your comprehensive land use plan. I know they're guides, but also, when you deviate from those, you set yourself up for challenges of constitutional proportions, not necessarily for me, but down the track. The future land use map is there for a reason, and DCA requires it there for obvious legal and governmental and political purposes. We also ask you to follow staff's recommendation because it follows the plan and the path of smart growth that your city has. And I'm not talking about new urbanistic smart growth. I'm talking about logical, sensical, layman-esque understood smart growth that the city has followed citywide and most particularly tonight focused within Ward 3. So, for the record, we are agreeable to all of staff's standard stipulations, all of staff's special conditions and stipulations, and we are expressly in agreement with those. And of course, the stipulations and conditions we imposed by virtue of the stipulation letter that's made reference to in your zoning analysis. I haven't dwelled on the minutia of this zoning. You're all more than smart enough to process that and figured it out with consulting with your staff and with the meetings you have had with yourselves. But we do ask for recommendation for approval and a final approval from you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Blackburn. And at this time, want to thank you for the time you've allotted me, and I'm here to respond to any questions as well as my client, Mr. Hanaway.
Any questions to Mr. Sams? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For those folks that were sworn in, if you'll come forward and tell us who you are, where you live at, and then make your comments, I would just remind folks as the hearing goes on, if, y'all are pretty smart folks, if somebody says something two or three times, we get it. So, but I hope, yeah, it was a "uh" out there, but it was like, we generally get it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It falls to me to lead off because I'm one of the ones that's got the greatest interest in this. My name's Lemmy Ward. I live at 1496 Spring Street, which is almost directly across the street from this property. And when my wife Leanne and I were discussing my appearance here tonight to talk about this case, she said, "I just hate it that we have to have conflict with the city." My response was that I didn't want to be forced into this position either, but that we have something important to protect personally and as a part of our efforts for more than 12 years to make Williams Park one of the premier neighborhoods in the state. Now, I told Leanne that I knew that if I was confident that the city would protect us from this inappropriate type of development, that I would not interfere, but I knew from the staff report and from Mr. Sams that this wouldn't happen. And I have to fight this both as a policy issue and if I have to, as a legal issue. In order to do that, I had to preserve my rights in the method required by Georgia law. Mr. Sams would be the first to knock me down if I didn't. Now, this is our home, and we have the right to protect it from inappropriate development. That's why I sent you those long letters, which have the legalese in them. They're required if I want to pursue this further. And I know the community development doesn't like my opposition here and that we're going to fight hard to have their staff report upheld and this position vindicated by a vote of the city council. I just hope that in defense of this decision and other issues weren't based on my opposition in the past. Obviously, we won't agree about the policy issue here, but I want to be sure to say, first of all, that I'm not challenging the right of the city council to make this vote or conditional zoning. One thing I do want to talk about is that I got 3 minutes and 14 seconds left. Mr. Sams took 18 minutes and 20 seconds. I just showed your city attorney the zoning procedures law, which says that the opposition should receive equal time to the proponent, and I ask that I be given that equal time. However, if I'm not, I'll try to make my, I'll try to make my, I'll try to make my comments quicker. I'm asking you, as the city council, to protect us. What happened to the developer? It's true, he's got a contract, he owns the property, he can probably build three houses, can't build four, but he can probably build three. The absentee owners that bought that, that he bought that property from made a nice profit, and he'll probably make a nice profit. Mr. Sams, this is just another fee. He's going to go home tonight, and he's not going to worry about this anymore. City, community development, that same thing will happen. They'll just go home. What else is going to happen to me? I'm going to have to walk out of my house every day and look at this and wonder, why, what more could I have said to make the city council understand the importance of this issue? All those things about the other, about the subdivisions, and we've done this 12 times, I have to prove, not only have to prove my case, I have to disprove the others? Well, was it shown that any of those were dead-end alleys and houses stacked without, not on private streets built to city development? I don't think so. What I showed you in those letters was that the city code requires frontage on a street, whether a private street, which subdivision ordinance would allow, or on a public street. There was no subdivision ordinance review undertaken here. There was no review. This is not a street built to city standards. Mr. Sams can say what he wants about my legal arguments. I'm not here to address those either, but I am here to address your comp plan, which says, your comp plan says you are supposed to consider the existing development. Each one of those properties Mr. Sams talked about has, is an RAD conditional with frontage on a city street, not with frontage on an alley. Your comp plan also says that you are supposed to consider the residential zoning, reduce the reliance on RAD conditional, again, which is not happening here. So, what happens to us if you vote is that I'm going to have to look at this every day and think, I wish I could have done more, but I can't. The problem that I see it is, is that the city council should protect us. If we can't convince you, then where else can we go? I don't have anything else, I don't have a magic bullet to this, but I do say that I have the right to speak longer than another 28 seconds, and I'm asking for that right to do so, because what I want to, what I want to put forward here is that...
You're good.
All right. Is that this is an important battle for our neighborhood. I don't disagree that conditional development is allowed, but the importance of conditional development is the conditions are imposed for the protection of the neighbors, not to bend the zoning code in places and ways it's not meant to be bent. You just can't waive the conditions of the zoning code by conditional development. You can waive the conditions of the zoning code, but that's not what was advertised for these public hearings, because if that's what you're, if that's what you're asking, if that's what you're asking, he's asking you to do, then that's what's happening is, because even RAD conditional requires street frontage, unless it was developed under the subdivision ordinance, which this clearly was not. So, I'm here to, I'm here to talk to you about, even if it was, there are others that were not developed before I pointed this thing out to you about city streets. It doesn't matter. They are, they don't set a precedent. You are required to follow your zoning code and your subdivision ordinance. If you made 100 mistakes before, it doesn't mean you need to make 100 mistakes in the future. Whether they are or not mistakes is not my issue. What I am here to do is to talk about the particular zoning issues here. Let me just tell you another thing I think about. Backing out in the morning, two and three-car garages, two and three-car garages on four houses. So, I'm looking, thank you, I'm looking at 120, 100, 115 feet away from my driveway, 12 cars entering and exiting a single driveway. Other places that folks have talked about are completely different. Just the example of across the street on Bernard Lane, where there is those houses that front on Bernard Lane, that front on the park are accessed by an alley off Bernard Lane. That's something that easily could have been done under the auspices of the subdivision ordinance, Princeton Trail, where the houses front on a private street. But it is a private street. It's a street that's got two means of access. I drove Princeton Trail on Sunday because I thought that might be where they were talking about. The development in Whitfield Park, Whitfield Park has many, many ways of ingress and egress, and they are private streets developed to the standards of the city. Mr. Sams admitted at P&amp;Z that this is an alley. Alley's provide secondary access. Now, he didn't get a variance here. He didn't ask for one. The other folks may have gotten variances for those things. I'm not objecting to a private street. What I'm objecting to is this alley being sold to you and to us as a public street, which it is not, as a private street, which it is not near the equivalent to. How this could possibly happen, I have no idea, but I do, the idea I do have is that I think we should have the right to the protection of the full application of the zoning code and the full application of the subdivision ordinance. I presented that to you. What Mr. Sams thinks about my legal arguments, as I said, doesn't matter a whole lot to me. I stand by them. I am prepared to stand by them and have them heard in another, if we have to. But I, and I have to have that right because this is the most important investment in my life. These folks will be, folks will be buying this in the future. They could build probably three houses there, but why build four and stack them on an alley? Single driveway and three houses across the front would likely be just fine. That's what you made Mr. Brown do when he made a similar application. That was not, that was not a 2015, that was not the 2015. The 2015 zoning, it's true, was five, and it didn't, and it didn't make it here. Shouldn't have made it, this one shouldn't have made it here, because the staff should have recognized it for what it is. You can't stack alleys on a private street. And some of my other neighbors are going to come here and tell you that there is, this is approved, you will be seeing them coming in to go, "I've got a deep lot. I'm going to build a house in the back, too. I'll build a house in my backyard, too." That's all over the city of Smyrna. Policy is reduced, the comp plan is to reduce reliance on RAD conditional, not to increase it by things like this. If you want to see folks coming to, coming to community development who aren't developers, who are just normal citizens and go, "Well, why not me, too?", then that's what you're going to see. But if you take a stand here, you will send a message that you are standing up for us and that you are imposing stricter standards, and houses need to be on public streets. You need to have access on a public street. That's what your zoning code says. That's what your subdivision ordinance says. I appreciate you indulging me with the extra time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Anyone else, anyone else that was sworn in?
It's kind of hard to follow him there. He made some pretty strong arguments, which I agree with. But my name is Keith Bentley. I live in Williams Park. I live on Gilbert Street. And my wife Susan and I have lived in Williams Park for about 11 years, but we know that people before us have worked really hard to establish the character that we have over there at Williams Park, and the improvement we've had in that neighborhood, just in the time I've been there, has just been sort of miraculous to me. And I would say now, arguably, Williams Park is the most desirable neighborhood in Smyrna. And you can see it because Mr. Sams and his client want to build $720,000 houses over there. I think we actually did have a house that was sold for nearly $800,000 over there recently. And that, and so I think, you know, there's, we're not objecting to redevelopment of that property. We are objecting to the way it's being redeveloped. And one of the things I wanted to mention here is that I was here at the December meeting, and you may recall, Mr. Sams was here representing another client for redevelopment of some property over on Dixie Avenue. One of the points he made there was a strong recommendation for you to follow the P&amp;Z committee vote on that project, which they voted for that one to be approved. This one has been turned down by P&amp;Z twice. With all due respect to Mr. Sams, the main issue here we have with this project is the same thing we have with the 2015 project. It's that dead-end alley in there with the houses facing the alley. Yeah, there were differences in density and design and maybe quality. We don't know. That was not our issue. It's the same issue. That's the issue that me and our other neighbors argued. P&amp;Z, in 2015, it was voted down 7-0, and on this specific project, it was voted down 5-1. Now, I don't know what P&amp;Z is for, if there's just a kind of a window dressing before we get here, but I think I strongly recommend that you follow the recommendations of the P&amp;Z committee. The other thing that I did want to make a point of is that they can redevelop this property and they can build some $700,000, $800,000 houses there and probably sell them. They happen to be deep lots. They could put a swimming pool in the backyard, whatever they want to do. A half a block away from these houses, there are four new houses that have gone in. They sold for $650,000, that range, and they all sold before they were finished. So, we have a hot city and a hot neighborhood in that city, so marketing that property and housing on that property is not going to be a problem. So, I just, I just think, and the developments that he cited as setting a precedent, they're not like this, and I think y'all know that. Y'all smart enough to know that. So, they're either subdivisions or they're not the same. And nobody knows that neighborhood better than we do, and we don't have anything like that in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else that was sworn in?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ron Davis. I reside at 1351 Roswell Street and been over in Williams Park since I got out of the military in 1990. I agree with Lem Ward's assessment, his legal assessment, that this project does not comply with your code. Your code will not allow them to do what they're proposing. This is something, in my view, my personal opinion, they should build two or three houses facing Spring Street. They'll still make it a bucket of money, but it's an attempt by someone who doesn't live in our neighborhood. But it's an attempt by someone who doesn't live in our neighborhood and an attorney who's helping them, who doesn't live in our neighborhood, is trying to make money on the neighborhood's back by building houses and stacking them in, in deep lots. Out of character, just to make money. And it will set a precedent. I disagree with my friend Ken Sudra's comment and with Garvis's comment that the precedent has already been set. We do not have any houses in Williams Park built on dead end alleys, facing dead end alleys. We've got some with the backs to dead end alleys, but the fronts face streets or parks. Durham Park I'm referring to. The lots in Williams Park are going for about $150,000 minimum, and that's for shallow lots, not deep lots like this. And I don't know what he paid for these lots, but it wouldn't surprise me if Ruby Borla's property wasn't given to him for the care that was provided to Ruby. And I'm told by another party, I haven't checked the public record, but they paid either 120 or maybe 140 for the other property. So, you can make money by building two nice homes or three. I don't know whether you can get three on that property, but Lim, Lim thinks you can, we haven't measured it. But why not just do the right thing? Make money building three houses or two houses facing Spring Street. And while you're doing it, you're making money and you're helping the neighborhood. By stacking houses in the rear to make money, I don't understand it other than greed. By the way, Nancy Smith's house on Gilbert Street just sold for 150. It was a tear down, and they're building one home on it. And they're gonna make money. Or they wouldn't be building it. I've already said it, but let me say it again. This proposal is out of character. We don't have anything else like it in the neighborhood, regardless of what's been said. It does not comply with the LCI that we spent a lot of good money to study. LCI, as you all know, calls for walkable communities with connecting streets, so that everything connects and facilitates walking. A dead end alley with four houses on it, I'm not going to walk my dog to the end of it, turn around, come back. So, they're going to be down there by themselves. And by the way, they would be looking in, the first one won't, the second house will be looking into the side of Mr. Brown's four houses that's directly to the east of one facing Spring Street. And the latter two houses back in the, in the rear will be looking into the backs of those four houses. Who wants to buy a house and look in the back of four other houses? Again, I say bill two or bill none, go home. Amy Shay's not here tonight. But she spoke at P&amp;Z. And by the way, at P&amp;Z, when it was 5-1 vote against this proposal, the Ward III representative was not there. But she sent a message to the, to the rest of the members that she was against that project. So, had she been here, it would have been a 6-1 vote. Amy Shay spoke at the public, at the P&amp;Z meeting, and she lives on a deep lot. It goes from Marsland Circle, where she fronts on, all the way back to the back of the homes directly in front of my home that Ed Hatcher built, that started the boom in Williams Park. And she swears that if this is approved, she's going to come before you with a proposal to build houses all the way back deep in that, in that property, to make money. And I don't think she will, but when they pass or whatever, somebody could do that. And there's lots of deep lots over there that people will be having that idea. Think about Liz and I's property. We could come in here and ask for three alleys on it. And build 12 to 15 houses and still be, well, if we built 12, we'd be, we'd be below the four and a half units per acre. And I don't care about the density on this. Garvis is proud of the density being less than four and a half. It's the way these homes are being built stacked in depth, which we do, we do not like. So, please don't set this precedent. We urge you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else who was sworn in? Just step forward and tell us who you are, where you live, and any comments?
Hey, good evening. My name is Will Newton. I live at 1533 Spring Street. It's one of the homes adjacent to the property, just to the east. I will say that, I know it was mentioned earlier that there is a precedent for this, and whether or not that's true, I think that just because there is a precedent doesn't justify or legitimize this proposal. There is such thing as a bad precedent. So, if there is a precedent for this, you know, I think it's just that a poor precedent. If not, this certainly is an opportunity to stop this from being a precedent because stacking homes in a, in a deep lot could lead down the slippery slope of overdevelopment, which totally goes against what this community and neighborhood is all about. It's a beautiful old neighborhood. Its layout, its design, has a lot of charm, has a lot of character. It's a special place to live. It's a destination place to live. And allowing a proposal like this would jeopardize that. And it would damage what a lot of people before us have worked hard to build and work hard to keep intact. So, I would hope that you guys oppose this and turn this down. Thank you.
Anyone else that was sworn in that would like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Ward a question if he would come back for just a minute? Is that permissible?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Ward, I guess you've, you've seen this.
Yes, sir.
And, and please forgive me, I don't mean to sound sarcastic or anything else about it, but we, we, we've heard our attorney side of it as far as the legalities of it. And he, he says, you know, as far as legalities, we can vote for it or against it. That's not a, not a question for me. But you do have more to lose or gain than anybody else in this. I understand, you're right, catty corner to this property. You, you can really tell me you'd, you'd rather look at three narrow lots across there than the front of this house that is being proposed?
Mr. Welch, I would not have made the argument in the way in which I made it if I wasn't being intellectually honest and prepared to say that if you could get an RAD conditional that meets three skinny lots on that street, then so be it. What I'm against is a dead end alley with four bigger houses. That's not what the zoning code says. I'm against RAD conditional generally, and I may come here and oppose three. But if the right design comes forward, then I may well be willing to work with those folks. Just like I worked with Mr. Hatcher when he built those three houses that faced the park. I came here and spoke in favor of him because I didn't feel it was fair to speak in opposition every single time. And then, what do I hear? I hear Mr. Sams use my own words against me despite the fact that we have three lovely houses that haven't, they're accessed by an alley to the rear and face the park. And that, so yes, I think that I would ra, I would rather, because in the interest of my neighbors, my lot's 70 feet wide, maybe. And there are other lots that are narrower. Mr. Brown's lots are fairly narrow there, and they've made decent houses. Zoning code says what it says, and I'm just reading what you all enacted. And I believe that if they go through the subdivision process, like they're supposed to do, when you take two lots and make them into four, you're supposed to go through the subdivision process and get a variance for it and, and show what you need to do, then that's one thing. But that didn't happen here either. And I don't think RAD conditional is meant to do that. And I may oppose the RAD conditional if I think that the, as you say, the skinny lots don't work. But I could be, that, that's a lot stronger of an RAD conditional case than this one.
Good. Thank you.
If there's no, if there's no one else that has been sworn in that'd like to make any comment, then I'll close the public hearing. Ms., Ms. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've listened to some very compelling arguments out there, and I, I do want to say that one thing I do believe in is development. And I do believe in smart development. And Williams Park is a very beautiful and quaint community, and I love being over there, and I love all the wonderful houses. And so, at this time, Mayor, I am going to move to deny the rezoning request.
Okay, we have a motion to deny this rezoning request. Second, Ms. Wilkinson, is there any discussion? All those in, what I just said, in, in discussion?
Okay. So, I too have listened to a lot of information that we've talked about and the, the other examples. I, you know, I asked about those, but I didn't see the 12. But I don't know either if they are on, on streets or, or alleys or, or that don't meet our standards. But that, that makes me uncomfortable about approving this with having homes facing a, a private drive that is going to be, it looks like from the plans, 20 feet wide, so it doesn't meet our standards. And it also, the plans have the utilities up under the street, and that also, you know, with that responsibility of the homeowners to take care of those utilities and the, the, the private drive when it doesn't meet our width. And, and then the other thing is, like, I'm concerned about setting this precedence in terms of the narrow street, 20 feet wide, or whether it's public or pri, private. I don't think we can do it public, 20 foot wide. But also, the, you know, allowing the utility, Smyrna Public Works trucks on a private drive that's 20 foot wide, and also the fire department. And I know they said that they, they agreed that it could work for a fire truck to get back there. And then, if they have to get out, they would have to back out into that center, back out to turn around. But I just, I have concerns about setting a precedence for a 20 foot wide, private street or whatever in terms of the, you know, with the, the trucks and the, the utilities and that kind of thing. Because I do think that we, we could see it more, happening more often like that. But anyway, so that, for those reasons.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's, well, where'd it go? That's four nays.
I think we're confused. I thi,
All right. The motion was to deny the zoning.
And I was agreeing with that, that's why I put yes. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if, if the motion's to deny, so if you are in favor of the motion to deny, then you vote?
Yay.
Yay.
Try this again. All those in the fa, all those that are in favor to deny the motion. Who are we waiting on? That's three four and three against. Is that correct? Mr. Norton votes in favor of it, Ms. Blackburn votes in favor of it, Susan Wilkinson votes in favor of it. Mr. Welch, Stoner and Fennel vote. So, that's three three. Now, I'm going to vote, because I think there's a lot of issues, I'm going to vote to deny. I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, which is to deny. I, I've never hesitated to step up to the plate whenever it's a vote. I vote to, to support the motion, which is to deny. Next item on the agenda is item 4B, 2017-362. Public hearings, only request Z17-019 special land use permit for the installation of a cell tower, 2.8 acres, land lot 634, 1700 Roswell Street, Verizon Wireless. This item will be tabled to February the 5th, 2018. Ms. Blackburn, if you'll make that motion?
At this time, Mayor, I would like to move to table item B2017-362. Zoning request for Z17-019 special land use permit for the installation of a cell tower, 2.8 acres, land lot 634, at 1700 Roswell Street, Verizon Wireless.
Motion second to table to February 5th, 2018. All in favor of the motion to table, please vote. That's six to, a six zero. Item C, under Land Issues, Zonings and Annexation, 2018-29, Public Hearing Zoning Request, C18-001, Modification of Currently Approved Site Plan and Building Elevations for Commercial Buildings on Pod B of the Belmont Redevelopment Project, 1.123 acres, land lot 490, northwest corner of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Belmont Boulevard, Halpern Enterprises. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Halpern Enterprises is requesting a redesign of commercial buildings on Pod B of the Belmont Redevelopment Project. The original zoning of the property zoned Pod B to a specific site plan, which reflected 11,000 square feet of commercial retail in two buildings along Atlanta Road with an open plaza area between the two buildings. Halpern Enterprises is proposing to combine the two proposed buildings into one building by eliminating the plaza area and relocating the plaza area to the ends of the building, buildings. In addition, Halpern Enterprises is requesting to increase the floor area of the building by 1,000 square feet to total 12,000 square feet. Community Development recommends that the zoning amendment be approved with conditions. And Mr. Sudra, that's here to provide you with more information on this as well.
Just to make sure, is the applicant here? Okay, just want to make sure. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make public comment concerning this zoning request for this modification? Let the record show there is no one. We'll let Mr. Sudra make his presentation at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is the front section of Pod B, which is the undeveloped pod that you see out on Belmont. If you recall, several months ago, the rear two thirds of the site, we amended that to allow another David Weekly product. This is the actual commercial pod. It's always been designated for retail. What we have tonight is just a modification in the way the building sits on that site. So, does, there isn't any change in our future development maps? What's currently approved? Let me get this other, see if I can get this other thing out of here. This is the currently approved plan and, as you can see in the center here, was to be a courtyard. And that's, that's the issue at hand due to some elevations change, which we will get to here in a minute. So, right now, they've got approval for 11,000 square feet of the commercial with the plaza in between. And this is, in general, what those Pod Bs plans look like. What they're asking for here is to move that central plaza to the ends and make it an outdoor dining area with, you know, with the appropriate green space associated with it. And then that center becomes their service area, dumpster area. So, in essence, they're, they're bringing those buildings together, opening up those ends and moving that plaza space to each end of the development. Oops, sorry. The parking lot has always been to the rear of the buildings. It's still to the rear. And this is a little bit dark, but this is an example of what happens when you have an elevation change with buildings pushed closer to the road, is you end up with sort of a deep well effect on the buildings there. That is what is projected to occur here, because there is a, if you're familiar with the property, even though it looks level, when you drive by, you're also going down the hill. So from one end of the property to the other, there is indeed an elevation change, so retaining all by, by the road is necessary. The purpose of this request, as I'm sure Mr. Moore will outline to you, is to reduce the height of that wall, so that we don't have fronts of buildings sitting in a well kind of situation. These are pictures of that subject property, and obviously, the development that has occurred around it. The staff's recommendation is for approval and to include the, you know, conditions that have, were previously approved to, roll over all of those that are appropriate, and basically just change those that have to do with how this building sits on this front piece of the property. I'm not gonna go through all of this, because we've been through these changes multiple times, as I said, and you can see, we've not, they're not asking for, nor are we recommending any changes to stuff that's already been approved, other than to add number 17 here, where we have the approval of zoning amendment and development of the commercial Pod B shall be in substantial compliance with the plan that they submitted December 15th, 2017, entitled Belmont Building Five and Six. With that, I'll leave you with their proposed site plan. Again, they are bringing the buildings closer and then moving that plaza area out to the ends.
Mr. Moore?
The clerk is simply handing out that photograph, you can see it a little bit better, and that way I can reference it without having to flip back and forth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of Halpern Enterprises. Also with me here tonight is Mr. Steve West, also of Halpern Enterprises, who has been very involved in the redevelopment from its very beginning of Belmont, and providing for what has been an outstanding success thus far, and will continue to be an outstanding success thus far. Really, the essence of this request is the picture, the photograph I just handed out to you, and that Mr. Sudrich showed you in his presentation. What that photograph shows is essentially a hole along Atlanta Road that stretches anywhere from five to six, nearly eight feet in height, coming off of Atlanta Road, and so it places the buildings that far below Atlanta Road. That's the result of the current approved site plan with that small plaza area in the middle. What it does is takes up too much length along the Atlanta Road frontage of this property in terms of providing for the adequate grade change from, if you're looking at it from left to right, from Atlanta Road. With that much building across the front in terms of its length, your grade change has to be accommodated to meet ADA requirements and other requirements of the code requiring that wall. I'm not an engineer, and that's how the engineer explained it to me. He's the one that took the picture of another development that said, this is what you will end up with if we have to do that. And so when, when Halpern came through to build this this past year and was informed of this, they immediately put a stop to it, because this is not what they want to see there. That's not what any of this council and the council members that came before you envisioned at this end, and so they retooled it to provide for the new proposed site plan. What that does is shorten up the length of the building going across, puts bigger plaza and landscaped areas at either end, and allows this now to be essentially at grade level. What you'll have now is simply just a step down from Atlanta Road, but it'll have that presence and the aesthetics and the visual that you expect for Belmont, and what we all thought that would look like as you drive down Atlanta Road. It doesn't affect whatsoever the quality of the retail, it doesn't affect or change whatsoever the proposed use, just allows for it to be presented in the fashion that all of us intended, certainly that Halpern intended and the City of Smyrna intended. With that, I'm here, I can answer any questions that you might have. Obviously, Mr. West is here as well and can provide any further detail. We respectfully request your approval of this very minor site plan adjustment to accommodate that grade change. Thank you for your time tonight.
Anyone having questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have one, just a timeline question. How's it looking in terms of if we approve this tonight, what kind of timeline are you on for the retail side? Because I know Steve's always hustling up the folks that need to fill these spaces.
Yes, we're on a pretty good timeline right now. So for the record, he said three weeks to submit for permits, that's how ready they are, and we certainly appreciate staff's assistance in getting this request through into you, so that they can stay on that timeline. They're just as eager to finish that portion of Belmont and finish off Atlanta Road.
We thank Halpern for the continued investment in Smyrna.
Any other questions? All right, that concludes the public hearing. Ms. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item C2018-29, the zoning request for Z18-001, modification of currently approved site plan and building elevations for commercial buildings on Pod B of the Belmont Redevelopment Project, 1.123 acres, landlot 490, northwest corner of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Belmont Boulevard, Halpern Enterprises.
Second. A motion second to approve this zoning request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Item 4D, V17-054, public hearing appeal, the denial from, by the License and Variance Board for V17-054, allow accessory structure in front yard of commercial property, 4.95 acre landlot 345, 2552, South Cobb Drive, SunTrust. It just says SunTrust. SunTrust. The background, Ms. Jones, please.
SunTrust Bank is requesting a variance for the placement of a freestanding automated teller machine, ATM, at 2552 South Cobb Drive. The proposed location of the ATM will be in the front of the property and the parking lot 50 feet from the front property line. The canopy will extend within the front setback. Per Section 501.2 of the zoning ordinance, accessory structures are prohibited in the front or side yards. The License and Variance Board denied the request three to zero at the November 8th, 2017 hearing. The applicant is appealing that board's decision. After a review of the standards above, Community Development believes there is no justifiable hardship for the accessory structure in the front yard, and approval would set a negative precedent. Staff does recommend approve, denial, pardon me.
Is the applicant here, present? Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Due to the fact that I am an adjoining property owner, I am going to recuse myself from any discussion, let alone the vote, and so I just wanted to make that statement. I'm gonna go take some time outside the chamber.
You can go up and build a snowman. Anyone that's gonna speak either for or against this needs to be sworn in at this time. Okay, this is in Ms. Wilkinson's district, Ms. Wilkinson?
So at this time, I would like to have the applicant tell us your name and address, and tell us about your request.
My name is Dionne Edwards, and I'm an asset manager for SunTrust Bank. Address is 303 Peachtree Center Avenue, Atlanta, Georgia. And we are here tonight because we want to appeal the denial of the variance. And the reason why we're seeking this remote ATM site is because we were in a forced closure at the Publix down the street on South Cobb. We were there for 13 years, and we had an in-store branch in there, and what that is, is a smaller traditional branch, but it's inside of the Publix grocery store. So we were there for 13 years, and they relocated to Atlanta Road, and their new location did not have enough room to bring in a bank facility. So what we're trying to do is basically replace the gap that we have. We had lots of clientele, hundreds of clientele that went to that branch, and it served a need in the community. And now, we, we don't have anything for our client, or anywhere for our clients to go, unless they go down the street. We do have a traditional branch down the street, it's about two, I wanna say 2.1 miles down the street. That's the reason why we wouldn't build a traditional branch in this area where we want a remote ATM. A lot of banks now are actually moving towards remote ATMs, because it can do this, it basically serves the same purpose as a traditional branch. You can make deposits, withdrawals, it serves the community very well. It would also serve the tenants at the shopping center, Halpern Enterprises Shopping Center on South Cobb. The other reason why we feel like we have a compelling argument is because, you know, you all told us that the precedence for a remote ATM, it would be a negative precedence, but we feel that the precedence has already been set, because there is a Wells Fargo ATM, which is an accessory structure in the front yard of McDonald's. And if you look at page four of the handout, you'll actually see this remote drive-up ATM in the McDonald's parking lot. So we do feel like the precedence has already been set. So we feel like SunTrust would not impact that by putting an ATM in the shopping center. The other thing was the parking ratio. Parking ratio in the shopping center is 162 spaces. Basically, the floor area had to be remeasured. You all have 50,000 square feet listed, but it's really only 45,000 square foot of retail floor space, which would require 202 parking spaces. The property currently has 162 parking spaces. With talking to the landlord, they have already agreed that they were willing to restripe the parking lot, and if they restripe the parking lot, it would add 30 additional parking spaces to the shopping center. Now, that wouldn't get us to the 4.5 per thousand that's required, but it would get us to 4.3, which is better than the 3.6 that it currently is existing right now. So we ask that you reconsider this use. We think that it would be definitely an amenity to the community. Anytime we put these remote ATM in parking lots, it's widely received, greatly received, our customers love it, clients love it. We just ask that you reconsider it.
And I've got a couple of questions. One is, either I'm in too much of a hurry getting to McDonald's to eat, I've never even noticed the Wells Fargo one, which to me is a good, is good, in that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. And the second question I got is, do you see a lot of crime associated with these ATM machines? Do you, folks getting robbed, or as a result of ATM machines?
Well, you know, you can't say there's no crime with ATM machines, but it depends on where the ATM is located. In certain areas, we hardly ever have incidents with ATMs, and then you may have other areas, which banks, we use a, we use a rating system based on, you know, the demographics and based on the crime rates. So that, we take all of that into consideration when we decide to put an ATM in a certain area.
Mr. Fennel?
Ms. Edwards, you had indicated that this Wells Fargo property sort of supplanted your feeding to the, basically to the Publix when it was across the way, or the Kroger, I guess, the Kroger Plaza. Is there a Wells Fargo bank in the main plaza of that facility?
No, there isn't.
There's not a Wells Fargo on the premises at all?
No, there isn't.
So this is a standalone? So speaking to the precedent that you had talked about, it was my understanding that establishing a precedent, precedent was something that we weren't willing to do, but here's visual evidence that it's already been established.
I have to agree that, that there's, I didn't realize it was, I don't, I don't bank with SunTrust, I don't bank with Wells Fargo, so I wouldn't have any need for it, but I was not aware, like I say, I'm in too big a hurry to go get me a double cheeseburger and something, eat healthy food, but.
I have a question.
Mr. Cochran, it would, I was, Mr. Cochran, you can. Talking about precedents, and I don't believe in setting, I think we address every issue on its own merit, boom, that's just the way I've been doing, the way I've had a mindset for 30 something years, which may be, you know, may not be the right thing. But Mr. Cochran, is setting a precedent, since we already got one up the street that I don't think most of us knew was up there, does that come into play?
There we go. I think what you look at here is this on its own merit, as it stands alone, and, you know, you can, you, it's not improper to consider precedent, but, but you still look at this on its own, and whether or not you think that the applicant has met the criteria to show that there's a hardship. What they've argued in this case is the hardship comes from the fact that there's a forced closing of the other facility where they were when the Publix moved from where it was to Atlanta Road. And so that, that's really what you look at. You, you look at whether you think that constitutes a hardship sufficient to give them this, basically relocated site, I think is what you're, what you're asking, yeah.
Right, it would be, it would fill a gap for us, absolutely.
So, so to the point of precedent, that, you know, that's a little different fact, factual scenario that would be considered if someone down the road came and said, well, you gave one to these guys, you say, well, if you chose to do that, you say, well, but here are the facts behind that case. You just distinguish that is, if it's distinguishable. But you, you're right, Max, you look at it on its own.
Ms. Wilkinson?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. So just so I understand it, your ATM machine that you had in the Publix that had closed, was it, was it inside the Publix, you said?
It was a full-service branch, inside of the Publix.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, my next question, I thought that's what you said, it was a full.
And we had an ATM in there as well.
Oh, okay, okay. And then the next question, I guess I have, is for Ken or Joey, because I know that that was heard at the License and Variance Board. was heard at the License and Variance Board. My question is, my understanding was, well, first, comparing it to McDonald's, you know, understand what Scott says, and what your, you know, your dilemma is as well. But I guess my understanding was that the McDonald's ATM that's there, the Wells Fargo, it was different because it was part of that whole zoning, I guess it is. If you could tell us about that?
Yes, ma'am. That was part of the whole redevelopment of that Kroger shopping center. So it wasn't, it wasn't a separate issue, it was all considered with the redevelopment. So from a staff point of view, we view that separately because it was just one of those elements with that. That's the distinction we make.
One more question, because this redrawing of the parking lot and restriping the spaces in the parking lot, have you all seen that before? Just curious, as far as the...
We've seen the updated version recently.
This one, okay, because, so I'm just also just looking at it in terms of the change in the direction of the spaces, and, I mean, maybe that's a, I don't know if that's a public or private issue, but I don't know if, I mean, I'm not as much opposed to the ATM machine after hearing what Scott Cochran had said, and then just looking at that as well, is that necessary, is what I mean.
That's totally up to them. If they want to restripe and try to provide additional parking, that's totally, totally up to, they don't have to get any approval from us.
Oh, okay.
Ken, I have a question regarding that as well. Does this, is this interfering with the future development plans that we just went through the South Cobb corridor study to speak to? Does it speak to that frontage where this would be located if they were granted a permit?
I, but, off the top of my head, Ron, on that, I don't think it interferes with that study.
Looking, yeah, looking at the map, I would think that that right-of-way that's part of the South Cobb Drive would still be there. I don't think it, this is into that.
Such a large right-of-way there to begin with, I don't think that there's any issue.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Do you have comments, questions?
Yes. Excuse me, for the record, regarding the McDonald's and the Wells Fargo, there was a Wells Fargo on that site before that drive-through was there. They were on the old Kroger site.
Yeah, they were back further than parking lot.
Yeah, but that's not my question. My question is, the parking, what I'm looking at, I think, is for the adjacent property with, shown in a red roof, is shown to be restripped, but it doesn't look like it's owned by this shopping center. Is it, or is it not? And the second part of that question is, what's the barrier between that parking and somebody that pulls into this ATM?
I guess to answer your second question, we would place bollards at the face of all of those parking spaces adjacent to the drive-through of this ATM, to protect any of those, the cars going through the drive-through from hitting any parked cars, and vice versa. And then the restriping in the, I think it is a Chinese food restaurant next door, we would have to go through that owner and get their permission to restripe that portion. We can restripe only on our lot, except we won't be able to get that 192 number that we're getting right now. It'll probably be closer to 185. And considering we're trying to make this non-conformity of parking as minimal as possible, we're trying to display the best-case scenario.
And just for the record, who are you?
I'm sorry, my name is Andrew Zales, I'm with the engineering firm working on this project.
Thank you. Steve?
Steve West, Halpern Enterprises. Just three thoughts, really. Number one is, that shopping center's not underparked. It hasn't been for many years. I know that parking ratio is in the code, but actually in the downtown district, we had to argue for more parking because they have parking maximums. So the only reason we would restripe that lot in that area to add parking is to try to meet the city's desire that we hit a number. The parking lot has plenty of spaces in it. Secondly, and I know I'm pretty old, but when I started managing that property more than 25 years ago, there were not one accessory structure, there were two in the front of that shopping center. And over the years, when those businesses closed, those were torn down. So we would be going from two to one, from what it once had. So I just, and obviously, we want to replace the business that was lost. There are customers there that were relying on an easy access to their money, and this will be a way to help them get it, so we appreciate it.
Yes, for Mr. West, I would agree that you are old.
Yes, thank you.
Because it was a Kodak Film Center there, you could drop your film by and pick it up the next day. What was the other one?
It was a hamburger place, it was two-story, something Junction.
Yeah, yeah, if it was food, I should know exactly what it is, so. No, but you're right, and that Kodak, whatever it was, was right when you pulled in.
Right, right. So, you know, the shopping center's got plenty of parking. I mean, it's, we don't anywhere close to fill up the lot today. We wish we did, but, you know, that's just, parking patterns have changed.
But occasionally, when I go to Dollar Tree, which I shop there frequently, it's a little tight getting in there, but there's ample parking. So you're right, it's a good, solid shopping center. It's been there for about 40, 50 years. So we, that's another one of Halpern's shopping centers that's done well, been consistent, filled up all the time.
Any other questions, anyone else?
Make one last comment, just off, not off the record, but it's not in my ward, but I'd personally rather see the parking lot stayed like it is. It's just easier to get in and out of these parking spaces like this, for the record.
Well, that's exactly what I was thinking when we brought it up. I was looking at the angle and everything, I was thinking it's probably easier to get in there in some ways. But that's why I was going to also ask if we approve this, if you could work with community development on meeting the requirements as far as the parking lot or the islands. I know, when I'm looking at it, it actually might even provide a barrier there from the cars going from one business, or the freestanding building there to the other. I don't know if there's something that can be done in that way, so that it makes the flow of the cars in both of those businesses better, I don't know, but...
Ms. Wilkinson, I also want to remind you that if it is approved, the actual, they'll have to submit a site plan and get a building permit for that facility. So it will be reviewed internally to make sure that it does function and doesn't interfere with other traffic. But in terms of mandating or restriping, or, you know, this aisle's got to go this way, and that's up to them. But the actual building of the ATM and what's around that will have to be reviewed by us.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Well, based on the information we received tonight, and hearing your argument that this is, you were presented a hardship due to your other location closing, and also that you do have a lot of customers in that area, that this could fill a need for those people. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve item 4D, or I move to approve item 4D, for the variance request, and reverse the decision of the License and Variance Board.
I have a motion second, Ms. Blackman. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved four to one. Mr. Norton votes in the negative, okay. So it's approved four to one. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, will somebody go get Mr. Stoner? No. Item E, V17-058, Public Hearing Appeal, the denial by the License and Variance for Variance Board Request. V17-058, Allow Parking of 11,000 Pound Commercial Vehicle on Residential Property, 0.59 Acres, Land Lot 554, 3624 Lee Street. Rob Wagner, the background, Ms. Jones.
Rob Wagner of Wagner Plumbing is requesting a variance to park an 11,000 pound commercial vehicle at his residence. Section 80-3 of the Smyrna Code limits the parking of a commercial vehicle weighing more than 10,000 pounds upon residential property or residential street. Originally zoning code restricted vehicles to 6,000 pounds, but was amended in 2005 to allow up to 10,000 pounds. The License and Variance Board denied the request three to zero at the December 13th, 2017, public hearing. The applicant is appealing that board's decision. Staff recommends denial of the requested variance as no un-unique hardship has been identified, and no similar variances have been approved.
I take it you're Mr. Rob Wagner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you'll hold on one second. This is a public hearing, is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this appeal by the Variance and License Board's decision? All right, Ms. Wilkinson, there is, now you want to swear in, Mr. Wagner? Ken, or Rusty, or Joey, do we have any background on this? Y'all want to make any presentation? Or is it pretty much set? If you're just...
We are prepared, Mr. Mayor, to do that if you wish, but it's fairly simple. I'm happy to run through it if y'all would like.
Yeah, if you want to just sort of step back, Mr. Wagner, let Mr. Sudrith give his spiel, and then we'll turn it over to you, okay?
As already been mentioned, this was an appeal to the License and Variance Board. Staff had recommended denial based on what our ordinance says regarding the maximum weight. License and Variance did deny the request with a three-zero vote on that. It is located on Lee Street. It's section 80-3 in the city code, which prohibits the parking of commercial vehicles above 10,000 pounds. The applicant has requested this variance so that his truck, which is 11,000 pounds, can be actually parked on that subject property. Property is owned R15, which is a residential classification. You know, I'm not sure there's any additional thing to say. I mean, since co-compliance is under me within the Community Development Department, we have requests like this on a fair, on a fairly frequent basis. Either people do ask, hey, can I park my vehicle here for business purposes, or we receive a complaint, or one of our marshals pick it up, and we have to enforce that ordinance. So it's not uncommon for us to be talking about 80-3. We're involved with it every, each and every month on that. You know, we, again, it's an ordinance issue. This is what the ordinance says. We, we didn't feel, I didn't feel that I had any leeway here with this. It was sent to License and Variance. They agreed, they turned it down, and now it's in front of you for that. So this is just the location map up there showing you, it's a corner lot. There, and just some photos of the subject property. And as I'd already said, staff, as well as License and Variance, recommended, I'll leave the subject property up there.
Mr. Sudrith, is the photo with the vehicles in the picture, is one of those the subject vehicle?
No.
Is there a picture in our possession of subject vehicle?
No, and your points valid, Ron? I didn't do it, that's my oversight.
Was the vehicle weighed by anybody, or was it just that they assumed it was, or he acknowledged it was?
Yeah, they came through our marshals, and there's a chart based on size, that it fell within that classification.
Mr. Sudrith, one more question, I'm sorry. Was this citation, original citation based on a complaint, or was it based on a ride-by by our marshals?
It was picked up by our marshals.
Any other questions, Ms. Sudrith?
I have a question. So this particular one was picked up by your marshals, but do you receive calls from the citizens about trucks in neighborhoods like this?
Yes, we've, in other locations, in other neighborhoods and so forth, yes, we have indeed received those complaints.
Ken, a quick question. Does Mr. Wagner have a business license with the city of Smyrna? Or are you aware?
I didn't check that, I'm assuming that he does. I didn't feel it was necessary to validate whether he had a business license or not.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Wagner, if you'll step forward.
Thank you, and I'm Rob Wagner, owner of A Wagner Plumbing. And I've operated my business, A Wagner Plumbing, out of my home for 11 and a half years at 3624 Lee Street, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080, with a current City of Smyrna Business License since 2006. I'm asking for a variance that I may continue to park my work vehicle, 2006, Isuzu NPR box truck, at my back driveway, as I have no other property in which to park it. The truck is a crucial item to my business, and a sole vehicle that I work out of. All my plumbing tools and supplies are in this truck. 24-hour accessibility of this truck is essential, as I also provide emergency service. I drive this truck daily to operate my plumbing business, which is my family's only means of income, which therefore would create an incredible hardship for my family if I can no longer park my truck on my property. Lived, we live on two lots, and it would be parked in the back driveway so that it is not immediately visible from the road. I do have some pictures, if y'all would like to see, that we have taken, if I can present them to the court.
While you're passing those out, we have some information. Looks like there's a wooden fence, miserect to there, is that yours, is that?
Yes, sir, and I have also... Yes, sir, and I have also added a gate there also, it's...
It'd be parked back behind that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wagner, have you received complaints from your neighbors, or do you have anything from your neighbors indicating that they're okay with this, or?
No, sir, no complaints at all. Matter of fact, I do most of their plumbing work. And they appreciate my truck there, so they can get my number off of it.
I guess my, my own little mind tells me that this is a violation that's 1,000 pounds over the, over the weight limit. You are in violation, you've made an application for a variance on this. And I guess my, my way of thinking is, and trying to weigh this out, we've got 11,000 pound versus 10,000, we know you're in violation. Size versus weight, to me, I think you could probably... Size versus weight, to me, I, I think you could probably keep the, the box of your truck and put it on a lighter body frame and meet the ten thousand pound limit. Is that a fair assessment?
Sure.
And, and we, we, in, in that case, we're still looking at a, we're looking at a, a less than ten, ten thousand pound vehicle, but it's the same size as the eleven thousand pound vehicle, and I guess I'm questioning our, our ordinance, which I'm, I really, you know, I'm not proposing tonight to go in and change that ordinance, but that, that's my way of looking at this, at this issue. And I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not a Ford guy, but I think, you know, you put it on an F two fifty frame versus an F three fifty frame, now you're under ten thousand pounds, but you got the same size vehicle sitting on your lot.
Right, and it is on a, a same frame as a, a Dooley truck. And the actual weight on it is ninety-eight hundred pounds, but it's the GVW that throws it up to eleven thousand capability.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Wagner. So, looking at these photos you provided to us, and I think I, I was able to see, I think the truck was pulled in facing out on one of the photos?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's, that's an Isuzu, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, you have a fence there, but is there a gate or something do you, where you cannot see it at all from the street?
Well, the gate would not be that tall, simply because it's, it wouldn't look presentable probably to match the fence around the house. The gate would be six feet tall. It would cover most of the, most of the front of the truck, just a little bit of the windshield, but it's still seventy-five feet behind the gate.
So the gate's the same height, same height as the fence, then?
Yes, sir.
You current, what, so you currently have, what, a six foot or four foot? What is it?
It's a six-foot fence.
Six foot there on the side?
Dog-eared, yeah.
Right, I understand. Yeah, I mean, I, as compared, I, you know, I understand your situation. You know, in the sense of business, you've been doing, how long have you lived there?
Almost sixteen years, and been in business for eleven and a half with this truck.
And you've been parking that truck?
Eleven and a half years right there.
Right.
With no complaints and no drive-bys.
Yeah, it, it is a clear violation of ordinance. And I agree with the, the councilman that, with Councilman Welch, that I don't want to get into an argument or discussion about do we need to make changes or not to our ordinance. But I do, in the sense from a hardship standpoint, from my view, and that may be something in consideration. Now, I think you had indicated to, in, in the, if I'm not mistaken, on the Board of, you know, the Board of Variance, that you had gotten permission, or someone supposedly from the city previously had given you permission or something, or what exactly?
When we applied for our license.
For your business license?
Yes, sir. They explained that we could not keep any warehousing of products there. And I said, the only thing I would request is have my work truck there, and they said, yes, you know, that's fine.
Yeah, but we didn't get into the finer details of the, the weight of the work truck with you? That you have any recognition?
I told them it was a two thousand and six Isuzu, because I had owned it about four months prior to the application.
Right. Yeah, and that's, that's, you know, I understand, and we have no record of that, obviously, because this was just a conversation with the staffers, what you're saying.
Sure.
And that's, you know, obviously, that's nothing this council did, or anything, or any documentation.
Right.
You know, we have ordinances, and the reason we have ordinances, I know you're not in HOA, because if this was an HOA, they'd never allow a commercial vehicle, period.
Right.
But this is not an HOA neighborhood. I live around the corner, not too far. I get a lot of complaints, actually, on commercial vehicles in the surrounding neighborhoods. You've made the point that none of your neighbors have complained.
Right.
So far. It's probably good that you're their plumber. And the other piece of that is, you generally have it behind a fence, so it's not just sitting out in the front on the driveway. Is that my understanding?
Right, well, I'm gone, you know, like eight, ten hours a day.
Right.
First of all, and I have had it outside the fence before, but since this, I would definitely keep it behind the fence, and it's very, it'd be very hard to see. You just have to be looking for it.
Right. At this point, in taking into consideration of those, I normally would say that we just follow our variant, our very, follow our code as it is, but I do feel there's some hardship issues here, from my opinion. And I'm gonna make a motion at this point to approve the variance requests and reverse the decision of the License and Variance Board.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve the variance and reverse the decision of the License and Variance Board.
Hey, can I ask one clarifying question before the vote?
Yep.
Real quick, just to ask you, I think I understood you to say that, that your truck doesn't weigh eleven thousand pounds. It's just rated.
Yes, the, the GVW is rated for eleven thousand. It actually weighs nine, nine-six or nine-eight.
So the actual weight is less than our ordinance requires, but it's just rated to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, for the, the capacity that you call it back, you know, legally.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, too, while we're on the discussion. I don't know when the ordinance was passed for this weight limit to be set at this level.
Thirteen years ago.
About the time that the applicant came in right after, or something? I don't know.
Right, bef- before.
It was before, so you knew the weight limit when it, when it came in?
No, I didn't. I hadn't started my business at that point.
Okay.
It wasn't, it brought to my attention that.
Yeah, if, just real quickly on the points Scott made. Ken, if you don't mind, I don't think it's a rating based on what a vehicle, it's not we go out and weigh a vehicle or anything like that, right? Yeah, it's just, it's, this truck is rated?
It's the gross weight.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I've, I've got the code pulled up now, and it's, it's, the code deals not with actual weight, but the rating.
Yes.
So in this case, the actual weight is less than even ten thousand, but the rating is more.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what our code's based on, is the rating, not, because otherwise, we'll be outweighing trucks all the time.
Right.
And I don't see us doing that.
So technically, am I understanding, Mr. Cochran, that under the rating system, which is what we built the ordinance against, that this, this truck, under the rating, is in compliance?
No.
No, it's not.
If, if we looked at just weight, it would be in compliance, but rating is not. So your, your question down the road, when you decide whether you want to address this, I think would be whether you want to still go by weight, rating, or some other factor.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Her screen. Let that safe show can restart it.
Reboot her.
Can you reboot her? You tell her how you want to vote. Nay or yea? Oh, nay, okay.
All right, but obviously, we're having some technical difficulty, and it's already two feet of snow outside. I'm gonna ask for a voice vote. We have a motion in second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed. Ms. Wilkerson, did you say anything? All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Fennel, do you vote yea or nay?
I got it.
So Ms. Wilkerson votes against the motion, but it's approved five to one. Thank you very much. Sorry you had to wait.
No problem.
Hope you don't have a bunch of calls tonight, because of the cold weather. Yeah, Wagner Plumbing, that's the name of the company. That is the name of the company, isn't it? A Wagner. It's because you want to be in the phone, phone booth. That's the boss. That's exactly right. Thank y'all. Item six previous, uh, five is previous license. We have none. Six is formal business. We have nothing. Seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Consent agenda, Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda is as follows. Item A, Approval of the January second, twenty eighteen Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. B, Approval of January second, twenty eighteen Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. C, Approval of the December twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. D, Award Walker Court Drainage Project to the lowest quote Tucker Grading and Hauling for thirty-six thousand, eight hundred, seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. E, Award RFP eighteen dash zero zero seven Pat Mail Storm Drainage Improvements to the lowest bidder, D and H Construction Company, for two hundred, four thousand, six hundred, forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item F, Approval of Atkins Park Tavern to extend premises for Smyrna Oyster Fest, January twenty-seventh through twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen.
Do you hear motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion in second. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Committee reports will start tonight. Mr. Derek Norton.
No report this evening, Your Honor.
Ms. Marilyn Blackman.
No reports this evening, Mayor, but I would like to say that yesterday, we had a wonderful opportunity of celebrating the MLK holiday with the Cobb County NAACP, and at Turner Chapel, and Susan Wilkerson joined me, and we had a lovely time. And I also want to send out condolences to the Turner Chapel family and the family of Dr. Marcus.
Mr. Corky Welch, Charles.
Very quickly, I need to make everybody aware that this coming Saturday, weather permitting, is Keep Smyrna Beautiful Pickup. I believe it starts at nine o'clock at the recycle center. So if you're, want to be part of that, want to come out and volunteer, I, I think if it's below thirty-two, they will either delay it or cancel it, but anyway, come out and help us clean up the city if you can.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to tell everyone about a meeting tomorrow night. It's the Smyrna Strategic Vision Plan. It's a community update. It's at Bronner Hall from six to seven-thirty. That's tomorrow night, January seventeenth. And there is also another meeting coming up, January twenty-third, and it's a public engagement session for, for people that are interested in things that we can do for our, our citizens with disabilities, and that is January twenty-third from six-thirty to eight at the Community Center. With that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
No report this evening.
Good man. Mr. Ron Fennel.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of a former employee, Jerry Jacobs. We lost him this past week to kidney failure. His services are four o'clock on Wednesday, I believe, or Thursday. It's Thursday. Is it Wednesday? Sad passing. And also, with the weather conditions, snow is falling outside, as is the temperature. Please be careful and drive safely.
Ms. Ms. Jones, anything?
I just want to add to a, an announcement. We have our second public input meeting on North Cooper Lake Mountain Bike, Mountain Bike Park Conceptual Plan. That's gonna be on January the twenty-fifth from six P M. to seven-thirty at the Community Center, so we encourage the public to attend.
Ms. Scott Andrews.
Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow evening at six P M. at the Community Center is the Strategic Vision Update. If you weren't already planning, we hope to see you there tomorrow at six P M. Thank you.
Ms. Scott Cochran. Nothing material. Nothing. I want to give a shout out to Chris Addicks up in the booth. Our regular folks could not come tonight because of the weather, so the camera's going every which way and cutting off our heads, and then staying on, because Chris Addicks, our, our I T guy. Hey, Chris, how's it going? He's, he's always had fat fingers, so. It's harder than it looks. He says, thank you, Chris, for going the extra mile. I appreciate it.
So, so we, I announced the community meeting tomorrow night, and I said it's at Bronner, and I believe Scott Andrews announced it at Community Center, and we were just looking it up, and it is.
So where's it at? The library?
Good one.
It's the funniest, late in the evening, sorry.
It's at Bronner, right, in the banquet hall. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it's not gonna snow. If there's no other business, be right for this body out of here this morning during it nine, I'll wait.